It is six o'clock. It is time to call our Sherwood City Council meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Hugh Jarboe, Pastor Christian and Saint of God, to come forward and lead us in our prayer tonight.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you tell us in your word that except the Lord keep the city, the watchman wakes in vain. You say also in your word that except the laborer builds with the Lord, he labors in vain. And tonight, we ask your blessing upon our meeting. We thank you for this city that you've given us, its beauty, Lord your grace that's upon it. We thank you for this council, and Lord, we ask your blessing upon them. We ask that you would give them your spirit and leading tonight. And Father, we also ask that you would bless our policemen, our firemen, our first responders, and that you'd bless our city with harmony. We give you praise for your grace to us, and we ask this all in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To call the... Brooks?
Here.
Harmon?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Aye?
Here.
Keplinger?
Sanders?
Here.
Williams? Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on September 24th, 2018, and the special call meeting on October 11th, 2018, as transcribed. So moved. Second? Williams?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks? Aye.
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 Sanders?
Aye.
Should have copies of the 2018 financials in your packets. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none? Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. At this time, I would like to ask Dawn Darder to come forward, and anyone she'd like to bring with her. I think you should ask your husband to come forward, and Ms. Becky Vassar, I want you to help present this. But you've been around a while. At this time, I'd like to recognize you. Proclamation to all to whom the greeting shall be. Dawn Darder has been a champion golfer for many years, and currently works for the city as a golf professional at the Greenfield Golf Resort. Dawn began playing golf at age six. She won the Arkansas Women's Association Junior Pro Play in 1975. She has completed three US Open tournaments in two different states. Dawn will be indebted to the Arkansas Golf Hall of Fame over the first 2018. Now therefore, I, Virginia Young, Mayor of Sherwood, do hereby complain, do proclaim... I, Virginia Young, Mayor of Sherwood, do hereby proclaim, and everybody knows it, that Dawn Darder is... Yay! Jesus.
She is.
Can we go too? Congratulations. Next item on the agenda.
You will have a motion to wait and read.
So moved.
Second?
Williams? Aye. Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 Sanders?
Aye.
Committees and or commissions, advertising and promotion commission. We did meet, and the minutes are in your packet if anyone has any questions. Seeing none, just want to advise that our next meeting has been moved one week later. So instead of the first Wednesday, November, it'll be the second Wednesday, November, the 14th, at 3:00 PM at the Bill Harmon Rec Center. Thank you. Civil and Civil Affairs Commission? Parks and Recreation Committee?
We did not meet in October. We have planned to meet in November, second Monday in November, but instead of at the Bill Harmon Recreation Center, the meeting will be at the, um, the new soccer fields and the new tennis complex to see the progress, so.
Thank you. Personnel Committee?
We did meet. Your minutes are in the, in your packets. Our next meeting is going to be November the 1st at 5:30 at Bill Harmon Rec Center.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Mr. Middleton?
Updating the zoning map has been one of the major initiatives of this planning commission in the past year. And the zoning map, we had basically four things that we wanted to accomplish with it in updating it. And the first one is that the original map was probably done kind of on Mylar. Mylar's a fairly stable material, but it shrinks and swells, which you may be. And the lines that were drawn were all drawn back in the 70s. Now, we have parcel maps that are updated by the county assessor's office, and while they may not be uniformly accurate, they are the standard right now. The zoning map, in many respects, should be following property lines. And when you put the old map on top of the current parcels, they don't always line up exactly. So what this first slide is going to show is the discrepancies in the zoning district. See the R2 right here? That property line is actually over there. And so, in order to make it consistent and very clear where the zoning district boundaries are, we wanted to get the map updated so that it actually followed the property lines as closely as we could determine. And this is the current map, how it looks right now. This is what it would look like in the draft form cleaned up, where they actually follow the property lines where it's clear they were intended to. Second thing that we wanted to take care of, and it's a fairly major one, is that the current zoning map has on the map floodplain zone. There is no such thing in the zoning code. Uh, there is a floodplain zone, but it's not a zoning district. And to be showing it on the map like this as if it were a zone, it doesn't make sense. So the new map simply takes that off. That's what it looks like now. That doesn't mean that we've done away with this floodplain zone or the floodplain. It means that it's not a zoning district and shouldn't be reflected as such on the map. The third thing, as we discovered, is that, I think it was 2009, the city council passed an ordinance creating overlay districts that were basically area impact safety zones for the Air Force Base. Now, the current map reflects these, and it includes the area outside the city which state law says we are responsible for. So we have, but on the new zoning map, we're showing, see both? It's what it looks like on the new map. It follows exactly precisely the, the area impact zones that were generated by the Air Force. They are impact zones. How we're going to actually administer that's kind of up in the air, but the zoning map has to reflect that they're there because they have been adopted and they are required. And final thing that we were looking at, and this is probably the most difficult one for us to deal with, is I can't quite understand or explain to you how some of the zoning district lines were generated in the first place. See if I can zoom a little bit closer. See, that zoning district doesn't follow anything in a major portion. And frankly, I don't know how it was originally drawn to do that. It's quite likely that it may have been on an early map, and subdivisions were subsequently developed that didn't pay any attention to that zoning district line. But whatever the case, it doesn't follow it. So what we've done with the current version is to the best we can determine is wherever we think the zoning district should be following a certain property line, that's where we put it. Now, this doesn't happen in very many places. This general area is probably the most significant where we're seeing that kind of discrepancy. It isn't just a little bit of difference, not following a property line exactly, it's way off. And so, we tried to get it as close as we could to what we thought might have been intended in the first place. Other thing that I think I should mention at this point is that when we're doing this, we're not trying to rezone anybody. What we're trying to do is get the zoning districts to match up with property lines or center lines or rail lines or some natural feature where it's pretty clear where that zoning district lies. What we want to avoid for sure is a zoning district cutting through the middle of a property so they don't know if they're R1 or C2, and that happens occasionally. The other thing is that we did not want to rezone property. I've seen some cities try this in the past, and none of it ever comes to that. What we're trying to do is simply interpret where we think the zoning district boundary was intended based on where it's lying on existing property lines. And in, in the interest of complete transparency, we're trying a little experiment. We have a place on the city webpage. Nearing, that's in planning, we've put them in this map. What we've done is we've taken the current zoning on top of an aerial image, and the proposed zoning on top of the aerial image, and the floodplain on top of the aerial image. So, so you can compare what exists and what's being proposed. Little bit larger. Now, this is currently on the webpage, so you can go look at that. What it does... I turn the draft zoning off, and we'll just zoom into an area. That's what the current zoning looks like. I turn on the draft zoning, you can see how it compares to what we've got. Turn off the adopted, and you can see that clearly. Now, the underlying aerial doesn't show up just real crisply, but at least you can get some sense of rooftops, which is what most people want to see. Any community I've ever been in, the first question that I ask is, "Where's my house?" So anybody can look at this and see what the zoning district is and what it is proposed to be, which should be essentially the same thing in most cases. Um, and, and remember I said we took the floodplain off, off the zoning map? Well, it's still out there. It's a little harder to see in this area, but it's there. And that is the federally designated floodplain area, not some kind of a zoning contrive. So, I've always found it helpful that not only do I want to zone the zoning district that my property's in, I also want to know if I'm in the floodplain, and, and the map would do that. Now, in the future, if this is something that people like and use, we can start adding suppliers to the thing. But it just seemed to me, and to the rest of the commission, that it would be really appropriate to get this in a position so that you could actually see what the zoning was in your particular neighborhood. Now, I'll say it again, we are not trying to rezone anything at this point. We're trying to clarify what the zoning is. And it may look like some rezoning. In fact, there's some properties out there. Typically, they tend to be multifamily residential apartment complexes that are on commercial, or R1, or R2, or something like that. They probably should have been rezoned at some point in time, but we're not going to do that at this point. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that rezoning should always take place in the context of consistency with the adopted land use plan. Since we're currently working on the land use plan, it would be premature to do any rezoning. The only things that we should be changing on the zoning map is if somebody can bring evidence to us that there was an ordinance passed that rezoned the property. And sometimes, we have found in a couple of cases where the zoning, the rezon never occurred. And we have corrected those and gotten those on the map. If there are, and mistakes happen. If there are any rezones out there that we didn't catch, we can always come back and fix those because there was an ordinance adopting them. We just need to get the map right. Questions?
Yeah. We really do appreciate all your hard work, ongoing.
Mr. Middleton, was it the, the commission's suggestion that we not, or I say we, that the council tabled this until next month so that this could be reviewed by the citizenry?
Let me put it this way, I would love to see this thing adopted, but I'm not in a huge hurry. I think it would be only right and proper for citizens to have an opportunity to look at this thing and make sure we hadn't missed something. We gave it three months. We tabled it several times on the planning commission, and we did so because we wanted to make sure people had an opportunity to look at it. But in all fairness, they probably will look at something that's before the council a lot faster than they'll look at something that's before the planning commission. We'd like to be a high visibility body, but not necessarily, aren't we? So I would not be opposed to the council tabling it and give citizens an opportunity to look at this.
I think that's a good idea. I would make a motion that we table this for 30 days.
Second? Williams?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 Sanders?
Aye.
And ordinance amending the Sherwood zoning code with respect to the schedule of uses and regulations of mini storage facilities and for other purposes.
This has been something of a hot button issue, at least during the time I've been on the commission. And I think the initial time I saw something come up was when there was an attempt to do some, any storage over on, uh, Brooks...
Brockington. Brockington.
And I think that there was two problems with that particular application. One, it was not anticipated by the zoning ordinance, which said that could only take place in R3 and R4. And R3 and R4, neither one of which was supposed to be on Brockington. R3 is supposed to be on 107 or Keel.
C3?
You mean C3.
C3.
What did I say?
R3.
I was close.
Yeah. They're both in the alphabet.
Couple letters off, that's funny. I'm proud of you. You knew what I meant. Yeah, C3 is 107 and Brockington, Brockington, and Keel. And C4 is along the frontage roads and basically the corridor of 67, 167. And I think we may have overreacted when we said, "Let's just take it completely out of C3 and put it all in C4." In our mind, the issue was, we shouldn't necessarily take it completely out, but we should put some protections in because the issue always is, basically issue is, people don't like the way it looks. It has relatively few impacts on adjoining property, except they don't like the way it looks. So with it, it seemed to us that we shouldn't completely rule it out of all but one of the commercial corridors, that we should put some criteria on it and make it conditional so that we can control the impacts on certain adjacent properties. And the biggest problem is when it's adjacent to residential property. And so, we wanted special conditions on that. We think that there is a demand, there is some demand, or people wouldn't be interested in putting these things up and investing in them. And to restrict them simply to what amounts to an industrial corridor is taking it kind of away from the marketplace. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it just needs to be controlled properly. And so, we're recommending that it be allowed conditionally in C3 with special provisions attached that have to be met in order for it to be approved. The thing about a conditional use in our current zoning regulations is that it not only has to pass a public hearing and the planning commission, it also has to pass the city council. So there's basically two tests that it would have to meet as a conditional use. And if it created problems that we didn't want to deal with, we could stop it. But if it was okay, and we've had at least one application that where it was adjacent to a residential area, and all the property owners said, "We love it. Let's do it." There is one other impact that we did not anticipate when we did this originally, and that was that we, in effect, made some of the current mini storages nonconforming uses. And in at least one case that I've heard of, it created a problem for their financing. And I don't think that was something we ever intended to happen. So if we make it a conditional use, they can get square with their financial arrangements. Questions?
I just want to clarify, and this would be more a question to you, Steve. What about an issue in terms of consistency? In that, is it appropriate for one area to be able to say, "We don't want a mini storage area to go in front of a, you know, a nice residential area, but we might want a mini storage to go in an area that's not adjacent when they're both C3." Is it okay legally for us as a council to say yes to this project and this land, and maybe a mile or two down the road, no to this project and this land?
As long as you make a good record on why you're making the decision, and that's why you've got the conditional use language.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we've got that all clear.
Well, so, I mean, just to be clear though, you know, the reason that you would approve it in one place and not another can't be because I don't like it?
It can't be because the people around it don't like it.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, the, um, I had a question about the additional conditions on the conditional use. Uh, we may have that in some of our other ordinances for conditional uses in the, in the zoning code now. I'm not familiar with them. Um, I am familiar with, in the past, we've placed conditions on a conditional use before we approved it. For instance, we said, you know, you can have a conditional use if you place screening, uh, six-foot fencing, screening between you and the residences of this type of screening, this tall screening, things of that nature. It seems as if by predefining the, um, screening and the type of fencing and things of that nature in this ordinance, you've tied the council's hands where that's concerned.
We can always impose unique conditions on any application that are relevant to the nature of that application. I view this as minimum requirements that could be adjusted by either the planning commission. But if they are minimum requirements, you gotta meet them unless you can prove a good case why you should.
So this is not all inclusive, is what you're saying?
Right.
So what you could actually address with chart is mentioning?
Right.
Thank you. Should we list, should we put in there minimum requirements to... Or as in some job descriptions, you say, "In other duties as a sign," or as, it's could there be another, like a G?
Yeah. Or other conditions as outlined by the planning commission or council? Just, just to let it get my head up? I disagree with you.
I mean, the way it's written, the way it's written, I'm just, I'm just concerned that somebody could say, somebody could come up and say, "You can't add additional conditions" because the way this, the way, the way you adopted the ordinance,
The ordinance says this.
The ordinance was drafted when you adopted it, uh, limited the conditions that you could place on.
That would be fair.
So why don't we amend it?
Can we amend it with a G section that says, "In other criteria is outlined by the planning commission or council, city council?"
I'm embarrassed to say, I haven't thought it through that far. Um, I just...
I think we can do one reading.
Not my remedy. Steve, you have an idea?
I think you could do an amendment and just say, "In other conditions that may be imposed at the commission level or at city council."
Fine, just add a number five. Let's just, instead of say a G, let's just make it a number five, other conditions.
Okay.
Then I move for an amendment that we add a number five that, uh, or additional conditions that may be added by the planning commission or the council, or the city council.
Second? Williams?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Uh.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 Sanders?
Aye.
And ordinance amending the Sherwood zoning code with respect to the schedule of uses and regulations of mini storage facilities and for other purposes, that's the reading with the amendment.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second?
Can I ask you a question real quick before we take a roll call? I wanted to ask you about E, "Any outside storage, including vehicles and/or vehicle equipment for rental use shall be screened and shielded from view of adjacent property or public right of way." The only problem I have with that is that some of these vehicles that they're storing at mini storage places are really tall, i.e. your RVs and things like that. You can't cover that up, and if it's at, to, uh, adjacent to a neighborhood, they're not going to be able to not see it, is my concern. And, and I, and under a conditional use, can you tell them that they cannot park vehicles? RVs, things like that?
You could. And this was originally put in there because there was a lot of opposition. And the reason that I heard that we wanted to put it in C4 was because we didn't want to see outdoor storage.
Right.
Especially a vehicle making it look like a used car lot. But we left that in there for that reason. But you could probably adjust it if there was really good cause. If all the neighbors said, "Hey, we don't have any problem with that. We don't want a 20-foot-high fence," we could consider that.
Okay. I just think there ought to be that opportunity for the citizens' input, which I know there is, but also for us to have the opportunity to say, "No vehicles permitted." Period. If that's possible for us to say that.
I think it assumes that vehicles are possible if they're screened. Are, are there not, you know, storage facilities that do not have outdoor storage, though? I mean, that would be a scenario like what, uh, council member McMahon is talking about, where there is no outside storage. True, and the cold and hard fact would be if, if the neighbors don't like outdoor storage of tall vehicles, there are other facilities in the city where they could do that.
So that's my question, we have the right to say, "No vehicles," period?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready to call the roll?
Williams?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 Sanders?
Aye.
Senior Citizens Committee?
Uh, Mayor, may I make a comment here just to be on the upside of this? At our last senior citizen committee meeting, which was last Tuesday, uh, I was appointed chairman of that organization, that group. And I will be giving reports on the senior citizen committees. The only thing I don't have a report on tonight is the flea market on Saturday. Robert, can you fill us in how we did?
Wow.
Very good.
Great job, Robert.
All right, thank you.
And a nice day for it. Next item on the agenda, sewer committee. I would like to ask our city engineer, Richard Penn, to come forward and give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, I was invited by Ms. Sanders to speak on her behalf for the sewer committee. The real update that you should be aware of concerns extension of services. Everything else is going well as far as our considered administrative order and other improvements that are ongoing. Those are all proceeding according to plan and proceeding well. The extension of services was a sales tax many years ago, and that accomplished some work within the city, particularly the Brockington Road pump station. There were funds remaining from that which have been available for some time. And Ms. Sanders brought that up at one of the meetings. We've been requested for several, actually three years, but it's, it's been rolled up in this annexation discussion over, uh, services in the area between Jacksonville and Sherwood and those lines and those overlapping, what were overlapping, uh, utility service areas, which we are now cleaning those up. And that, the result of that lawsuit at the end of last year, 2017, made a decision for us, and it said, "Sherwood's is Sherwood's, Jacksonville's is Jacksonville's, CAW has their area." Following on that, in 2009, Chris Engineers provided a master plan for serving areas which were either unserved or underserved with wastewater utility service. to include the General Samuels Road area, which was not included in the 2009 plan. Uh, Chris Engineers has completed, uh, the update drawing as of last week. There are three options outlined in their assessment for extending the Sherwood sewer north of Kellogg Creek. Uh, I received the third option last week, so I'll be taking that to the sewer committee in the November meeting to present that third option. They've already seen, uh, and heard of a couple of the other options. We'll be able to, uh, lay all three of them out there and make a decision and a recommendation on what level of service to proceed with the designs. Chris has performed enough of the design calculations to know what to recommend and to develop these cost estimates. And, and that's what will be considered in our November meeting. Um, that's the part about the sewer. There's also other utilities. For instance, Central Arkansas Water will be serving the area along General Samuels Road, and they are going to provide the engineering design, and we'll be working together on ways to approach, uh, construction costs.
And we have had more than one individual developer that's interested in going north, so...
Yes, I, we've been, one developer that has been, uh, active in these discussions for a year, since, ever since I've been here, uh, at the city, since January for sure. And, um, I'm familiar with that one in particular, but there are others with, uh, much larger land areas that are beginning to ask now because if you notice, according to our zoning map, uh, you notice a lot of rooftops in that. Well, the rooftops shows that the available lands are being developed, so where do we go next? That's pretty much north of Kellogg Creek. And there's a lot of land on the west side of 107, and the Gravel Ridge Improvement District has sewer for the Gravel Ridge community. But that is bounded by Highway 107 and General Samuels Road and a couple of other lines that I won't bore you with, but the creek for one. So anything west of 107 is available for us until we get to some other improvement district, which they do exist further west. A lot of, a lot of open land, and we've had several developers asking, "When's it going to be available?" So this is something that really started 10 years ago with the annexation, and now it's really becoming important.
Appreciate the update.
That's right.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, committee.
We've worked towards, uh, spending a quarter percent sales tax to get some, uh, traffic moving throughout Sherwood. Uh, we also, uh, have, have started doing overlays in the city of Sherwood, come down toward the end of the third and fourth quarter, uh, but that's how Brian's able to negotiate and get, get the best deals that we can, uh, to get as much, much work as we can done. So, uh, those are underway. Uh, would say that leaf collection, uh, starts November 1 or...
It starts November 5.
November 5. Okay. So I, I've noticed in some parts, there, there's already leaves out, out towards the curves, and, and that's fine. Um, you know, Brian and his crew will get started soon. I know that's a, a big thing for the city. So, um, barring any questions, that, that's my report.
I will say that, um, Bron has been successful in the last month or so hiring some new CDL drivers. We were, we're, we're still extremely shorthanded, but we have made some modifications in that area. He has, I think he's hired four?
Hired four.
So, things are looking up in that department, so I appreciate it. Next item on, you and Ted.
A resolution changing the date of the December 2018 Sherwood City Council meeting. Be it resolved by the Sherwood City Council pursuant to city ordinance, Sherwood City Council's regular meeting occurs on the fourth Monday of each month. The fourth Monday of December 2018 falls on December the 24th. December 2018 meeting of the Sherwood City Council shall be rescheduled to Monday, December the 17th at 6:00 P.M. That is your resolution.
Move for adoption.
Second. Williams?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Williams, did you have a motion?
I did. I, I have a motion to amend, um, the resolution in item number 10. Um, I think I called Steve today with asking some questions, and I think I was like one of three council persons that, that called you as well. So, um, if I could just share those with you. First off, you know, we all know that a resolution is a one-time occurrence, and some of the language throughout this resolution has each year, each year, each year, which does not imply that's a one-time occurrence, so, um, some of that I'd like to be stricken, stricken, excuse me. If you go to the very beginning of the title, it says annual. Um, we may have annual, but I don't think we need to do this if it's only a one-time occurrence. Going on down to the whereas, on the third whereas, it talks about the new city revenue is now available. Yes, but that revenue, that one-quarter percent, will go into the operating budget, of which we all know some of that can be used for sidewalks. But I don't want to be, that language to imply that, that that is that new revenue. So we don't know what percent of that's going to be, you know, so it may be that this new revenue that may now be available could be utilized in that way. So some of that, I think, needs to be edited. I don't have that verbiage. The next whereas, at the very end of that, it says, "The projects will guide sidewalk development and grant applications." Just period. We don't need to go future because this is a one-time occurrence if it's a resolution. Um, in section one, it talks about submitting to the city council by September 1. Each year should be stricken in a resolution. It should say like 2019 and not each year. In section two, that is talking about ongoing resolutions and continuing. I think all of section two implies it's a continuation, which it might be, but again, if it's a resolution, it's a one-time occurrence. So I think entire section two needs to be stricken. Um, section three is fine as it written. Section four needs to have a period after street committee because at the end of that it says each year and altered by the city council. But if it's, you know, a one-time resolution, we could alter it with another resolution or if we decide after this one year that we want to make it into an ordinance. Similarly, on section five, um, I struck, I thought that all of section fives should be stricken for the same reason as section two, because it implies a carryout from year to year, and again, a resolution is a one-time occurrence. Um, section six, similar thing. The other thing that I think is very important, we all know that we have a sidewalk ADA lawsuit that we have just had a settlement on. So it's my opinion that we need to add a line to this section to make sure that, um, we, that the ADA settlement has priority with that settlement money in, in some part of that because eat, whatever our percentage of money is that needs, that has to occur. Um, so those are the, some edits, some amendments I think should be addressed. Um, and I don't know if they need to be addressed here, if it need to be tabled and rewritten, but the whole, the, I mean, I want to compliment, um, Councilman High for, for bringing this to our attention. However, by having it every year, it made it for me, an attempt for an ordinance and not a resolution. So I thought those edits need to be made.
A resolution can be ongoing. A resolution allows flexibility. An ordinance is more punitive. What a resolution does is it allows flexibility, whereas an ordinance does not. This is appropriate as a resolution. It is not a, the law is not strict as to what is a resolution versus an ordinance unless you're talking about punitive and about strict compliance. A resolution involves policy and flexibility, which is what this does, especially when it comes to timeframes. It allows the flexibility in terms of ongoing. In terms of ADA, this doesn't need to address the ADA lawsuit. This is about new sidewalks, not existing sidewalks. You're mixing two different issues with that. Um, and in terms of, yes, we do have revenue that's coming. We've got, um, it doesn't say that it absolutely has to come out of that. It can come out of the general fund. Um, also in the ballot issue on the three-quarters sales tax, uh, sidewalks were also put in that as well. If you look at the, um, ballot title for it, the fact of the matter is, one of the reasons to bring this forward is because we do have some additional revenues due to that election that will be coming into the city, and this is an opportunity on which we can then utilize it. It's a reason, and that's why it's put in there, Beverly. A good...
I think I'm going to call a point of order. Um, first of all, we're discussing a resolution that hasn't been read, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the resolution into the minute so that we can be, uh, discussing it properly.
A resolution charging the street committee with creating an annual sidewalk project list scored on various criteria to be submitted to the city council for selection.
Um, now, um, technically, Beverly's correct. A resolution is, uh, temporary in nature. A ordinance, as I understand it, is, um, an ordinance is, by the Supreme Court's definition, general and permanent in nature, and a resolution is temporary for one-time, one-time occurrences. Um, if this is going to be permanent in nature and if it's going to bind future councils, then it should be an ordinance, if we're going to bind future councils. Um, uh, the, uh, that's the reason the Supreme Court has used the, used the term, used the terminology, "General and permanent in nature," and that's the phrase they use over and over and over again when they differentiate between ordinances and resolutions. Uh, we've had that, we've had this come up over and over and over again, uh, in, in past years as to whether we should use a resolution or an ordinance and stuff. Um, I think that, um, I think that councilwoman's, councilperson, councilmember, I can't, no one will work all these days. Williams's changes were a little bit, um, over the top personally, but, um, uh, you know, the, uh, changing the recitals, I don't think is necessary, the whereas clauses, and, uh, the body of the, the body of it primarily, uh, I don't think needs that much adjustment. Uh, I think it can simply be adjusted to be, uh, section one changed to, uh, created by, submitted to the ci, city council by September 1, 2019, and the rest of it would primarily work from there. Um, and as for the ADA, uh, language, um, I am, as you know, Alderman High, particularly sensitive to ADA issues for a personal reason. Um, I would never want anything to come up that may, that implies there's a conflict with our ongoing project with complying with the settlement with the ADA lawsuit. I don't think it detracts from this resolution, which I personally think is a good idea. Let me say that right now. I think this resolution is a good idea. I think ranking is a good idea. If it was an ordinance, I would be fine with that as well. I think it would be a good idea if it was an ordinance, if it was permanent, we did it from now on. Um, but, and I don't think it would detract from it at all if there was a sentence added to it as well that simply said that, um, the ADA prod, that, uh, any work being done in compliance with, uh, correcting existing sidewalks for ADA purposes, uh, took precedence over new sidewalk construction. I have no, you know, I think that that doesn't detract from it because I think that's a given to anybody here. Um, but, uh, all that said, I think this, uh, I think the idea of ranking our sidewalks and, and prioritizing our projects based on need is a good idea. But I agree, resolutions are one-time, they're, they're, they're intended for one-time purposes, and there's significant case law, uh, on that fact, on that point.
I, I thank you for, for bringing that back up, but, you know, I'll give on some of that stuff if it's just that, that whole idea of, when it kept saying each year, next year, next year, if it's one time, if it's, if you leave the one year, I mean, the each year in there, and we know it's a resolution, it doesn't mean it's recurring, and if after one year we want to make it an ordinance, that'd be appropriate. Again, I commend Ms. High for, for bringing this up, but those tweaks were important to me.
Could we take and change the resolution to an ordinance right now? Make an amendment for that?
I would not be in favor of that right now. I think it has to be rewritten to be an ordinance.
Well, they would have to be, everywhere it says...
It's on the agenda.
Well, we'd have to, wouldn't we have to? Basically by vote?
It wasn't in the agenda.
Right. It can't you...
Can't you, you can change it.
You can suspend and...
Well, we don't have one. We'd have to have one in writing. We'd have to have an ordinance here in writing. We don't have an ordinance here in writing. We'd have to have a printed ordinance here in writing to suspend the rules, pass it around and everything else. We can't, we can't make one out of, we can't make one out of...
What's the hurry? What, why can't we wait till next month?
Why, why not try it for a year?
I think trying this, I think trying this for a year is a resolution. I think trying this for a year is a resolution, seeing how it works is a fine idea, and if it works next year, make it an ordinance, make it permanent. I think that's a fine idea. We just need to tweak the language a little bit. I don't think we can go through it right quick and fix it. Like I said, I think the recitals clause is not a, not a problem. Um, but I would ask, uh, Councilmember Williams, um, to withdraw her motion and let's work through it a little slower.
Totally agree. I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. I just felt, felt like there's some issues we need to look at as, as a council.
Okay. So you withdraw?
I would be glad to withdraw.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to amend, starting with section one, that it say, "The street committee is charged with creating and submitting to the Sherwood City Council by September 1, comma, 2019,"
Okay.
"striking each year a ranked list of sidewalk placement projects." And then that paragraph would be complete from there.
So, so Charlie, before, before we go too far, um, in, in looking at this as a, as a, a non-permanent resolution, uh, in order for us to have, you know, an opportunity for much of a, a sidewalk program at all in 2019, we, we really need to, uh, up the ante on the dates that are here. I mean, I, I would think that, um, you know, we, we would want to have, uh, the, the street committee's criteria in front of the council, uh, no later than February, so, so that you guys could see that. And then a, a list of sidewalks, um, that we've considered and ranked, et cetera, uh, probably, you know, I, I would like to say March, that's probably precedent. I would probably back that up to April.
Okay.
April 1.
April 1, 2019.
Well, I, I would say for the, um...
Tell us what section, please.
Section 1.
Section 1.
So you're changing September 1st each year to April 2019, and then it'll be at the city council meeting?
Yeah, so it'll be, yeah, April 20, 2019.
Okay, so I, I revise what I just said to April 1, 2019.
And then section two would be, need to be then February.
But you have to still take out the each year in both places?
Right, you take out, yeah, strike May 1. You put, no, just put February 2019, so it would be at the city council meeting.
February 1. Instead of May 1. Right, okay.
And there's two places it has each year in it, both of those. And since it wouldn't, since it's not continuous that from previous years, we won't have a previous year, so that language should be stricken as well.
Which section are you specifically...
Still section two in that second sentence. Projects to be considered for ranking, the street committee may be uncom, uncompleted projects rollover. There's not going to be a previous year, we may have some of those right now, but with new projects submitted to the street committee by February 1, 2019. Exact dates here.
So just for rankings by the street committee?
Right.
Then you, right, you want to strike all that submitted?
Mm-hmm.
So it should say, "Projects to be considered for ranking by the street committee," and then striking each year, "May be uncompleted," continuing to strike all of that language all the way to submitted to the street committee?
This had, what we're trying to say there, so that has to be submitted by Fe, February 1, 2019.
Right. You want no language in there that, that makes reference to a previous year's list.
Right, because it's a one-time thing.
Okay.
That makes sense. Have a rollover in a, in a resolution.
I, I think, I think we've got these backwards. I think section one needs to be, am I looking at this right? Ranked list of sidewalks by April, okay. am I looking at this right? Ranked list of sidewalks by April, okay. And projects.
Is it possible, since we've agreed that this isn't gonna take effect till February, that, do we have a motion on the floor right now?
Yes, I have a motion to amend.
Is it possible since what we're doing right now, maybe that could be tabled and y'all work on it? And vote on it next month because nothing's gonna happen till February.
He, his timeline then gets yanked up by another month.
He knows it's happening.
Yeah, we, we've got time, right?
Okay.
So we're still talking maybe uncompleted projects. Scratch rollover from the previous year out?
Right.
Just, it just needs to say projects to be considered for ranking by the street committee. Submitted for ranking, is submitted for rankings by the city council members.
Must be.
Must be by February 1, 2019.
Replace each year, everything must be, there must be a must be submitted to the street committee by February 1, by February 1, 2019.
And Councilman Lilly, I heard you say that you thought section two should be section one.
Actually, that should be back January.
So the, the more, the more I'm looking at it, the more they're kind of the same, right? I mean, um, street committee is charged with creating and submitting to the city Sherwood council uh, by April 1, a ranked list of sidewalk pro- uh, placement projects scored on various criteria, et cetera, et cetera. That's section one. Section two is projects to be considered for ranking by the street committee.
Must be.
Must be submitted by, so that needs to be.
To be submitted to the street committee. Okay, okay, okay.
So what, so you would need that by January?
No, he, he said by February.
By February, but you're, and then you then give it to the city council at what date?
That would be April.
April, okay.
Now we're going to section three.
Charlie, just one quick question on section two, please. Okay. Uh, down here on the very bottom, it says, uh, projects may be submitted for ranking to the street committee by city council members, planning commission and/or city staff. I think the and/or city staff, uh, is a wide brush of stroke there. I think that should be deleted and amended to say public works director or mayor.
Public works director. And there. For consideration.
Sir?
These are just submitted for consideration. They're just submitted to you for consideration.
I mean, when you say staff, city staff, who are you talking about?
Well, that's, that's what he's, Tim's saying is it needs to spell it out, Brian or the mayor.
Otherwise, you're talking city staff, you're talking about everybody in the city that's.
I would hope we'd all work together. We could all come together without having to sign it.
Okay. I agree.
That's the intent, though. I, I agree with you, Tim. But I understand what you're, and I appreciate your, your point.
It should be used by the street committee unless all each year, section four, each year comes out. Section five, priority of sidewalks should be adopted, submitted to the city council, priority of each year comes out of section five.
Now, Charlie, you struck section four altogether?
No, just the each year.
From the end. Okay, thank you.
I hope you know what you're asking.
Prior to, now the prioritized sidewalk project list should be adopted, submitted or amended by the city council prior to, now if it's submitted to us on April 1 of 2019.
We can't do it until like.
You need section five at all?
We don't need section five.
That's what I had, I had told things strictly.
Yeah. We don't need section five if it's one-time deal.
And you don't need section six, I don't believe either. Well, you might, you need the criteria to, to us.
Well, you'd rename.
That's up in section one, talking about various criteria.
Yep, so I don't think you need section six either then, do you?
Well, submit a system of, of scoring criteria into the city council, I think. One of the things we want to see is the scoring system.
I'm gonna have to get, get you guys to go to work or something.
Where was that one? Where was that day?
Section six. So scratch the May and put January 2019.
Okay, and then in place of section five, have the language, the ADA language.
Right, okay.
Okay, that is.
No move.
That's his motion. Is there a second?
Second. Any reading that's supposed to be? I'm not clear on how.
Listen, I marked all of mine.
We need to take a, we need to take a vote on the amendment.
I did.
Well, I think a lot of us did. Just put somebody's name.
Williams. Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMenon.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
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 Sanders.
Aye.
A resolution charging the street committee with creating an annual sidewalk project list scored on various criteria to be submitted to this city council for selection is amended.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Williams. Aye. Lilly.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
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 Sanders.
Aye.
Mayor, that is the agenda.
That's not a camel.
Is there any new business to come for the council?
Uh, extra, please.
I've got, I have a citizen that signed up just tomorrow. Okay. New business? Do we have an economic development update? I'm gonna ask you ahead and come forward. I'll make the next one announcement. It better not. What are there, three Bs?
B, 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 B. I'm gonna be real quick. I have two things I really, really want to share. You know where I am if you have deeper questions or you want more details. Um, new business leads, I just kind of want to reiterate, my focus is and has been, um, I'm looking for grocery stores, I'm looking for restaurants, I'm looking for detail. That's my focus. Through our MLRA partnership and these were large, um, manufacturing type companies looking for places to locate. We were not a good fit, but I look at them every time just to make sure. I mean, they were looking for massive land. They also went rail with SPAR and of course, that's not us. But just so you kind of know, it's the things I look at because you never know if there's some little thing hidden somewhere that I could find. So always look at those. Um, exciting thing I want to share with you though is retention and expansion. And I shared in the beginning that that's really important to me. And so three, three companies I've met with in the last month actually, um, that I'm excited about. I don't know if you guys are familiar with CAE, which is here in Wildwoods Center. Um, it had a big announcement, CAE USA was just awarded a $200 million US Air Force contract. Huge, big deal. What that means for us in Sherwood, it's, it's about 60 new jobs. But these aren't little jobs. These are, these are nice, um, engineering jobs. These are high, high-paid jobs. So we've worked with CAE, we've met with them, we've connected them with the AEDC. And they're working with them to give them some incentives as they bring these new jobs in and help them find these jobs. So super excited about that. That's a big deal for Sherwood. The next announcement we have is TELTECH or TTECH, they are always adding jobs and they are tasked with about 200 new jobs in the next 12 months. That's huge. These jobs start out temporary, but they actually become, they can move into permanent jobs. So we're working with them and we're connecting them with the AEDC again and we're trying to make sure that they know about, now these are lower paid jobs. These aren't the high-end jobs, but, um, we're trying to make sure that they know about the incentives available with the state for them just to take care of our local company there as well. And then the last one that we've just met with is Cardinal Health. And they have actually identified the Sherwood location as their center of excellence. And so the center of excellence, the, um, the person in charge there has a vision to bring in 200 jobs also to Cardinal Health, that location within the next 12 months. But his catch is he's competing with California and Ohio inside his company to bring them to Sherwood. He's got the space. If you guys have been out there and toured that, it's gorgeous. I had no idea how beautiful it was inside. So he wants to fill it up and he's got a vision. So we're stepping in to help him in with the state. There's incentives for attracting jobs. There's even more incentives when we're competing with other states. So state, AEDC is excited to help us win these jobs. So I'll keep you posted, but that's kind of been where I've been putting a lot of focus. If you did the math, that's like 300 jobs into the Sherwood area in the next 12 months. So give or take 12 months. So that's a big win. We're really excited about that. Um, and then last, two little things. I'll be in training next month, beginning of November. I'm going to NREDA, which is National Rural Economic Development Association. Um, First Electric Co-op has actually worked with me and they're gonna send me there and they're gonna cover the bill and they're gonna take care of it for me. So I'm excited to learn all I can at that conference. And our Uncommon Communities Group, we had our first meeting. It went well. We're all inspired. We're gonna change Sherwood completely. And our next meeting is in two weeks. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Good job. We appreciate you being our voice. Next, we have a citizen who had asked to address the council spot, Mr. Robert Wall, if you want to come forward. Just want to remind you, coming, that you do have, um, a limitation of five minutes, okay? You may not need that much, but I just want to make that.
My name is Robert Wall. I live at 8212 Mark Avenue, retired, uh, rock firefighter. How much money does the city give to Fire Improvement District 6 or 5?
I'm reminding you, this is not a question and an answer. This was just simply an opportunity for you to address the council.
Okay. Are you aware that I have written FOI requests and notified you personally via email? And the garbage cans on Mark Avenue and, and two locations have not been moved in four years except for the truck to pick them up? And perhaps you'd like to explain why?
I'll remind you again, you asked to make comments. That's what this portion is for.
Do the council members realize that there's a convicted felon on the fire board that serves this community?
Move forward your next comments, please.
Are the councils aware that the hope, the, the reason why there's, the, the, the slow moving of the hotels in Sherwood is because of the fire protection in this community? Now, I'm aware because, uh, the, uh, the, I, I'm in, I'm in a group of guys that's, uh, collecting fire trucks across the United States and, uh, some of these guys, uh, have fire trucks along with me and, and the word's out. It's out that Little Rock's got better fire protection and Jacksonville's got better fire protection. That's the game plan. They're not gonna come in here unless they have a first-class fire department with regular employees. They aren't a bunch of young guys. It's, I mean, people, I'm talking career people. And of also, along about the fire board, um, the, uh, IFLI, the fire chief, and he was gonna charge me $400 for, uh, documents for fuel. The last time I sent the fire department, it was $10,000 worth of stolen fuel uncovered by the state police. The, uh, after, after illegal activity, uh, it turned out instead of 400, no, uh, 150 pages, it was only five pages. So there's some activity going on down at the fire department y'all need to know about. And, um, kind of holding us back. I appreciate y'all listening.
I will say this, and I'm not gonna rebuttal anything with you, but we have a very fine fire department and we are very proud of them. We have a great ISO ready. They do a great job. And it works for our community. And you are certainly entitled to your opinion, but I think you'll probably alone. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. Next, in regards to announcements, Sherwood Citizens Space Academy Alumni Association is doing some give back opportu- has had some opportunities to give back to the community on the border and Pop Murphy's. Um, can contact them for more specific dates. Sherwood Halloween Carnival, October 31st, 6:30, 8:30, Sherwood Forest. Sherwood Animal Shelter Events, October Adopt Shelter Dog Month, Dog Month. $25 adoptions of dogs and puppies all month. Halloween Free Adoption Event, October 31st. November Events, November the 5th to the 10th. Free Adoptions in Honor and Remembrance of Veterans, November the 13th to 21st, home for the holidays. Free Adoption Event, fieldable to help provide pet food to low-income families during the holiday season. Sherwood Trail Lights begins November 26th. That's hard to believe that's next month. Will continue through December 30th, uh, from 6 o'clock to 9:30 nightly. And that will begin, that opening night is the night of our November council meeting, correct? And, uh, council member Harmon's daughter, alumni, alumni, my daughter's gonna flip that switch this year. Yes. Uh, Sherwood, uh, Christmas parade's gonna be Saturday, December 1st at 2 o'clock PM. Breakfast with Santa is December 8th, Sherwood Forest. And also, uh, I don't think our veterans parade's this long.
It's not. And I was gonna bring that up. Our veterans parade is November 4th. And it's a Sunday afternoon. It'll follow the same route as the Sherwood Christmas Parade, starting down the Come and Go. And if you're interested in having an entry, uh, you can do that by contacting the chamber officer, council member Keplinger. He is the chairman of the committee. So, uh, either way, we're always looking for entries. Also, I just, there was, um, a few photos on the overhead. We just, we got a learning information over the weekend that our library received a merit award at, um, the Arkansas, Arkansas chapter of the American Institute of Architects. And so it, it received recognition and they were honored Friday night at their annual banquet. And one more item I just want to make is an announcement. I, I would appreciate it if perhaps you can put in the paper if you feel like you need to. I don't know. And I'm not trying to start a discussion and I, I ask for none. But I have had a lot of comments made to me lately that people are concerned that we're gonna start spending our three, three quarters of a percent bond monies on sidewalks. We all know we've agreed upon the projects, money's bonded for that and that's the direction. But I've already had people like Robert Rich saying, are we not gonna get our improvements? And Mike, I think you could attest to that, to people for a question. But there's been some, I, I, for whatever reason, doesn't matter at this point, but the three quarters percent is dedicated to those projects that we discussed. How many, how many meetings did we have, Ken? So we all should have memorized by the end. So I just wanted to put that out there because I, I would, I don't want people to, to be, feel like that we're already backing up because that comment has already been made several times. Time to vote.
Is there any more? I voted today. It's time to vote. Don't forget to vote. Be careful getting out of there. 10 to 6, not 8 to 6. Do we turn?